Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the fall reopening town halls, specific to middle school. I want to first thank you for joining. It sounds like there's a lot of you out there and we know how important this is to you. And with the late notification, we really appreciate you taking the time to be here. Wanted to make sure that you knew if you have anyone out there that was not able to join us today, please tell them not to worry, we're actually recording this. And we will be presenting tomorrow 9:00 AM at Center Street and Richmond Street in Eagles Nest and then 3:00 PM tomorrow for the high school. It will have the exact same PowerPoint. We're going to go over almost all the exact same information. So please rest assured that we want to reach as many of you as possible. And at the end of this presentation that we're going to go through, it's similar to if you saw the board meeting, I did present this last Tuesday at the board meeting. We just want to give you a little background on why we're presenting this scenario. At the end of it, we'll be opening up our chat feature for you to ask some questions. Now, we hope that we're able to answer them. Some of them we will not be able to answer yet and hopefully we'll answer some along the way. So, uh, thank you again, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Moore to introduce what we're talking about today.
Thank you, Ms. Janasek. Welcome, everyone. We really appreciate you taking time to be there today and we rely that it was a bit of a short notice, but we're trying to give you just a very brief update as to where we are and what you can plan for in the fall. Um, this was important to get out so that we can then, uh, begin our really deep dive on the planning regarding all of the logistics. So as much as we'd like to have all the answers, uh, because we're literally reimagining every single procedure, process, um, and practice that we have at our schools, um, moving forward, um, you know, that will take an entire committee to, um, take a look at this, um, summer. So again, thank you for taking the time. Um, uh, this is specific to the instructional plan. So everything really depends on this decision so that from there we can then really take a look at what do food service, um, options look like? What do, um, TLC options look like? Um, how will we have care on these other dates? So we don't have all of those answers for you today because what we're trying to get out to you today is specific to what the instructional model would be. So thank you to so many of you, uh, who did take time to answer our, um, distance learning survey. Um, there were a number of you, uh, who have participated so far. Uh, I took a look prior to logging on and we have a thousand people, um, who have participated. So that's amazing. Uh, and those answers are really important to us so we can have a finger on the pulse as we design these things moving forward, what is most important to our families. So, uh, we appreciate Mr. Wright, Principal El Segundo Middle School also being here. Uh, and so we've kind of got a triage of, um, educational services. Ms. Janasek and the Oversight Committee have been leading this effort. Uh, and the first big decision is the instructional model for reopening. So I'm going to turn it over to her, uh, to get started.
Great, thank you, Dr. Moore. Danny, if we can go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Um, so since our sudden closure in March, we have, um, had a lot of information flying our way, a lot of conversations and just, um, a lot of gratitude for our teachers, our staff and our parents. We're all jumping in this together and I feel like we closed our year on a very positive note, knowing that we have time to plan for a new fall. So looking at the guiding framework that we have to go by, I just want to make sure this is really clear because I think I can speak for every single ESUSD employee. If we could have the students back full time, we would. We miss them and we love them, but we have to make sure that safety is number one for our staff and for our students. So listening to the CDE, the County Office of Education, Public Health Center, the CDC, uh, we had to make some decisions. So we have been looking since we found out we weren't coming back as administrative team to really make sure that we are looking at all different possibilities in returning to school safely. The Los Angeles County Office of Education put together a, um, I guess a task force made up of superintendents, including our own Dr. Moore, to give us guidelines in the South Bay. So we have the best information coming directly from Dr. Moore on what is helpful in planning. As soon as we received this framework, we pulled together a committee and, uh, you could see on the pictures on the PowerPoint slide right here that it contains five buckets. The five buckets that will be our lenses moving forward and were in this committee are instruction, the red book, health and safety, the orange, social emotional well-being is the yellow, the green is parent and family engagement, and the blue is operations. These are all critical pieces analyzed once we make sure that we have the model that we can work on collaboratively. Next slide, please? Thank you. So with those five buckets, I bolded a couple of these just because of utmost importance, instruction and safety. Safety is absolutely number one. We cannot return unless we can ensure that it's safe. Instruction is our job. So we need to make sure we are able to provide a consistent, rigorous and fun instruction to move our students forward. And obviously communicating with our parents and our teachers and our staff. That's why we have these town halls in place to make sure we're hearing from everybody and we know that we're moving forward together. Um, and then obviously we are up against some challenges fiscally and we need to really thoughtfully understand that we are not receiving more money. In fact, we'll be receiving less. So we are going to be working harder than ever with the students in mind. Okay, next slide, please? So just to give you, uh, Dr. Moore shared, there's over a thousand when she just checked this morning or last night when I checked, there were 970. So thank you for continuing to be back. It's open until 5:00 PM. We love reading, um, and I said this at the board meeting, I want to say it again. The kind notes and messages saying how grateful they were for our teachers and for the staff that really put in their heart and soul into this. Thank you for saying those and I'm finding a way to share them back because they mean the world. Also sharing what didn't work, that's so helpful for us planning and moving forward. We can assume certain things, but hearing from you really makes a difference. And, uh, certain things like learning management system, being more consistent, being able to go into one area and not five different, lots of great information that we're working on already. So I just wanted to share that 56% chose their first choice to come back two to three times a week. Thankfully, if you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Our Oversight Committee worked really hard looking at those five buckets I talked about from the Los Angeles framework and looked at two different scenarios. One of them being a 50/50 A/B day for our students and the other one being a 4/10 model, which I'm actually not going to dive into because that's not our recommended model because we vetted both of them, looking at the pros and cons and felt that we would like to recommend the A/B model. So the committee was comprised of students, well, a student representing the students from El Segundo High School, teachers from all of our school sites, staff from all of our school sites, parents from all of our school sites and all of our site principals and Dr. Moore, two board members and myself. And we, um, we had a lot of wonderful conversations. Hopefully you've heard about these. We wanted to get the message out and talk to as many people as we could and we had a lot of great conversations about what would be best returning for our students. And we found that if you go to the next slide, please? The A/B model is what we would like to recommend moving forward. And the purpose of these town halls is so that we can hear from you if there's something that you're really worried about with the A/B model that we haven't thought through. Like I said, we have had many conversations. We've looked at the pros, we've looked at the cons and the pros far outweighed any con. I think, um, knowing that we can move forward in a model will really help us get all the details together and work on the boots-on-the-ground type activities such as what is it going to look like on day one? How do we get the instructional distance learning in place? All of those very important details. How do we clean? How do we make sure which groups go in? All of those things can't happen until we determine them all. So anyway, the model is up there, but I just want to reinforce, um, any student that has a health compromise or is, um, nervous, anxious about coming back, there will be the full distance learning model also for any student in ESUSD. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. We will have a description of that in an opt-in process this summer. Okay, next slide, please? Okay, once these town halls have been completed and we can't find a reason not to move forward with this, this, we will bring it back one more time to present to, um, at a board meeting and then we can get to work. We really want to make sure our task force breaks into two groups. We're going to break them into instructional, social, emotional support and family and community engagement. Really dig into the details, provide guidance to the school sites. Once the school sites have that guidance, they have a lot of work to do also. So it's going to take an army team and we're in it together. So the purpose of these town halls is really to see, is there a major concern with our guidelines with the A/B schedule? We feel like we've thought through everything, but we really want to make sure we answered any questions. Again, unfortunately, we don't have the details yet because we can't put the details into place until we have the model. Go to the next slide, please? Okay, that was our quick overview of the program. Um, and I'm going to introduce Mr. Wright in a second. He's going to give you some more details about what ESMS has done up to this point, just conversation-wise. And then if you have conversations or questions related to the model, please put them in the chat and I'll start looking at those and seeing if we can answer any of those specific questions. If we can't answer it, I apologize. We're going to still compile them. We will have the questions, we'll be bringing them to our committees moving forward. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Do you want to go ahead and share about El Segundo Middle School Bulldogs?
I would love to. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you all for, for being on with us today. Um, at El Segundo Middle School, we've been working with our cell committee, so part of our leadership. Uh, and then we'll be creating our own subcommittees at El Segundo Middle School um, to look at instruction, social, emotional and our parent community engagement. And then another group, uh, with looking at health, safety and operations. Um, as we are having these discussions, uh, inside of school, we will definitely be communicating them out to all of your stakeholders and, and providing information as to what, what we're looking at for next year. Um, one of the great things that we have here in El Segundo is a, is a small district. So there's only four of us principals, uh, and I've been working with the other principals and we've been talking in depth about how we're going to be able to keep kids together on this A/B schedule. So that's something that us as principals are working on is how we can keep, if your student is at Center Street and the middle school and the high school, how can we ensure that they're going on the same days? So that's something that we're working on currently and in scheduling and for our master schedule. So just so that you all know that, that we know is important for many families to, to keep kids together. So that's something we're definitely looking at, a good strategy to be able to do that. Um, and then finally, um, we're, uh, you know, as we send out our, our, uh, updates as what's going on in the middle school, uh, we'll also be sending opportunities for input, um, of maybe questions that we have an answer that you guys may be able to have. So, uh, it's important for us to be aware of questions you guys have and, and we know, uh, there'll be questions out there, so we want to be able to provide forms that throughout the summer. And so we'll be providing a way for people to be able to have input. I think that is it for me on the updates.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. And I believe you've already answered the first question. Will you be considering siblings? And this is a conversation that's right shared we're having at the district level too, to really see how we could make sure to support our families in this consideration. Um, we think we can do it. We've already had some great conversations. Um, so yes, absolutely, we will be thinking about this one. Uh, and the next question is, I have been running this model in our community and getting parent feedback. Does the rotation class days in the stagger make sense from a cleanliness standpoint or information retention standpoint? Mr. Wright, you want to answer that one?
Sure, as, as we started our talk as a staff, um, what does our class rotation look like? That is something we're definitely looking at, um, and how can we keep classes as clean and safe as possible? So will it be students rotating classes? Will it be teachers rotating classes? There are many different options out there that we're starting to run through. So that is definitely in our, uh, on, on the front of our mind of, of keeping kids safe and what classes look like.
Thank you. And the next one is, will the middle school still have eight classes? Would you consider not having PE and electives? And that would be once we decide upon the model question. So we'll hold on to that question. Will instructional aids be made available for remote assistance for the distance learning days for students with IAs and their IEPs? Again, like I said at the beginning, I'm so sorry, we're not going to be able to answer a lot of these at this time, but yes, these are all conversations we're having. And once we have the model, we're going to make sure we're able to answer these questions. So I will hold on to that one also. What are you doing over the next few months that will dramatically improve the distance learning program and training your teachers on it? Uh, I can answer that one because no matter what program we end up rolling out with, we have, uh, steps in place that we're going to be working with some teachers and rolling it out to other teachers. We absolutely need time. We didn't have time. Teachers flipped the switch. They woke up on Monday morning and we're teaching distance learning. We have already had committees learning at learning management, what's working, what isn't working. We've surveyed the teachers. Now we've surveyed the parents. So we're taking that information with teams and we'll be really working to make sure that our teachers are prepared and successful in the rollout. We also, just in case this question comes up, we'll be working on professional development, engagement for our families too, because we know you were thrown into it too. And we really want to support our parents before they have to jump into this. Okay, the next question, will students have an opportunity to do full-time distance learning on a temporary basis? For example, if a student needs quarantine for 14 days, will they be able to do full-time distance learning without having to abandon their in-person classes? Yes, thank you. We will, we will absolutely do that. But a caveat to that is if somebody decides they need to go into the distance learning this summer and that's a decision they make as a family, we are not going to be able to bring them in, in the middle of the semester just because of space, enrollment, class sizes. But if somebody becomes ill, absolutely, they will be safe. They will continue with distance learning and then come back. And the details, we will have that by-site-by-site information.
Maurice, I'd like to add to that too. In our survey that we had a thousand folks respond, uh, we're holding steady with under 10%. So it was about, uh, it's gone from about 7% to just under 9% of our families that are opting for distance learning. So if we have only as their option. So I just really would like to emphasize again that kindergarten through 12th grade, we will have the distance learning only, but there will be opportunities that you will be locked in, not, uh, what the scenario that, uh, Ms. Janasek talked about. Where a student opted to be in, uh, the A/B model, the hybrid model, and then needed to quarantine for a particular reason, um, they would still hold their slot in the hybrid model. But if you choose the distance learning model only, we have to staff accordingly. So we'll be peeling off, uh, 9% of our faculty to deal with, um, services for those students. So the only time to return back to a hybrid should you choose to, uh, will be at a semester.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. The next question is about two working parents and how are they supposed to arrange? We don't know that yet. Um, our job is to bring our students back in a safe way and instruct them. And that's what we're building right now. We do have our TLC program that is working also and we'll be able to work based on what model we put in place. So a lot of these details are still being sorted out. We know how challenging this is for our families. Um, and we think honestly, what we've heard from our survey, from our teachers that want to prepare and from our parents, they want to know what we're doing next year. And that's the purpose of making sure that we had a town hall today and tomorrow so we can really hear. Dr. Moore?
Yes, I'd like to also add that we are looking at exploring, uh, moving the TLC model up to the middle school also, uh, for sixth, seventh and eighth. So if you were, let's say your child was in the A cohort and they attended school on Tuesdays and Thursdays, then, uh, would there be a spot where they could go on, uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday for distance learning at the school? So we are looking at that. Um, obviously the Department of Public Health for Los Angeles County will set the ratios and the requirements for that, uh, but we're being creative, uh, and seeing what we can come up with to support our families. This offered Spark program, uh, but we have been in talks with the city to possibly just assume, uh, the TLC at this time because it would be all our own staff and trying to limit the number of people coming in and out of the school campus.
Great, thank you. The next question has to do with electives and we anticipate having electives. But again, we can't make any decisions until we have a model in place for our students. Um, and the differentiated learning across subjects, again, that will be part of our instructional committee to really ensure that we have a highly rigorous collaborative instructor model. I, we're really actually excited about this. I've, I've had a lot of great conversations with our teachers. They have so many great ideas, how to cross, uh, collaborate between other subject matters and, and really engage our students. Um, so we have a lot of conversations. Until we have the model, we can't really start working on those at this time. And the ability to go back and forth between the virtual and hybrid, I hope that we answered that before, that yes, you can, if you're in the actual hybrid program, have to go out, you're ill, you may come back in once it's safe and you are cleared. Dr. Moore?
Did want to mention that there could be times where a particular, uh, classroom needs to be completely shut down due to someone, uh, having COVID. So, um, we are having to be nimble and flexible. And if we get word from Department of Public Health that a particular classroom or a building, uh, has to be shut down, that it could be, they all go on distance learning for two weeks, um, while we see if there are any further cases. So, um, I don't know that we'll get to the point like we did this year where it would be school closures in a district-wide level, but, um, we have been told be prepared, that it could be a classroom, it could be a wing, it could be a building, uh, it could be an entire school, but not likely the entire school district.
Great, thank you. The next question is about, um, priority over sending kids to school more often. At this time, our model is to look at every student returning either two days a week or being on distance learning. Those are the two options we're looking at for our students. Um, and then knowing if you need to make a decision a little bit later. I think that's an important question. I know that things change very quickly and families are hearing things on the news and feeling comfortable and then uncomfortable. Um, we're hoping to commit to a distance learning program by August 1st so we can really build our program and know what our numbers are and make sure that we have enough in each of our classrooms, um, for safe reasons and space. But, uh, if we have to do it earlier, we might. And the full-time working parent, I think we already answered that one. And then options, Ms. Peachley asked, I'm Peachley, if a block one day per week, and that's absolutely something that the middle school site team will be working on. That's a site-based decision and all of those things will be conversations once we have the model in place. Mr. Wright, do you want to say anything to that?
Yeah, I think you said it perfect. That's definitely something that we are, we're talking about as a site base and as we go through our, our bell schedule or how we do, uh, block in, in the past will, will definitely be discussed.
Thank you. And the next question is actually the AMPM and I've had this one a lot. So Kelsey, thanks for asking this. It is because of cleaning. We really looked at it because consistent every single day would be fantastic. We just do not have the manpower to be able to clean effectively in between each of the cohorts. So thank you for asking that. I know that's been a big question from a lot of people. And will you be cohorting the classes or will students be able to mingle within grade level during breaks at school? And I can answer that and say, we're going to have to follow the guidelines. What the guidelines put into place for what we are responsible for doing is what we're going to follow. So more to develop on that one. Dr. Moore, did you want to share anything on that one?
Yes, we're still waiting for formal guidelines from Department of Public Health. They issued a draft document probably about six weeks ago, but it was only a draft. So we had some ideas on what to expect and have been, you know, basing our planning on that. Uh, we've been notified by the county office, they're releasing a, a new draft, uh, again this week. Uh, but until we have something in final form, uh, you know, that's what we'll have to continue to deal with. I know we'll have something in final form likely, uh, by July. Um, so we're, um, basing everything on that.
Thank you. And it looks as if I missed a question about the selected model being put in place for the entire fall semester. Uh, at this time, that is what we're doing. However, will we reevaluate? Absolutely. This is such a fluid, um, strange, unprecedented time that we, we will be analyzing. Like I said in the very beginning, we want our kids back. We know that this is hard on everybody and the most effective program is to be seeing our kids every single day. Dr. Moore?
Yes, I just wanted to add that, um, uh, you know, as you see new guidelines come out and they'll say, oh, a gym can open now, for example. Um, and as you know, not all gyms are ready to open the very next day once that release is given by Department of Public Health. So should, uh, a new guideline be issued by Los Angeles County Department of Public Health that allows for us to allow for kids going back to normal, uh, and serving, uh, in what we all know as school today or, or yesterday, so to speak? Um, we will absolutely make that happen, but we will need that moment to, um, reset the classrooms. For example, we're going to have to take half the furniture out of the classrooms and put them in bunkers. We're going to have to make a lot of different plans and even lunches, for example, knowing how many kids we feed a day, uh, and then making arrangements to feed all of the kids, uh, over 800 kids, for example, at El Segundo Middle School in a day. So, um, once we get a change that is more permissive, we will look to see what are the things we need to do to make it happen and then we will shift, uh, because we know that our kids are social animals and love to be together and collaborate and learn. And we absolutely want to provide that if it is, uh, considered safe.
Thank you. And the, the next question I definitely want to address because I know there's going to be a lot of conversation about this. It's, could we have a model of A/B in the following week be A, B, C? So that kids every other week get three days with their teachers in the classroom? And, um, I just, I just want to be very respectful and make sure I'm, I'm sharing that teachers are going to be teaching in class and designing curriculum for the days they're gone on a weekly basis to really keep it continuous, fluid and highly engaging and rigorous. This, they need some time for this and that time is going to be on Mondays. Students will have work to do on Mondays and there possibly could be a check-in with one of their teachers and a social emotional, there could be a component where they're seeing their teacher in a synchronous manner, but manner, sorry. Um, but it, it definitely is some time needed for our teachers and to do some more disinfecting. So, uh, Mr. Wright, do you want to share any more about that?
Yeah, I think, uh, and it kind of goes with another question that I hear about, um, you know, how will distance learning 2.0 be superior to 1.0? And I think really does that teacher collaboration and that time with that Mondays that teachers can really work on putting together lesson plans and collaborating together to, um, really make this experience as, as best as, as we can and, and as, get as much information for the students and, and make it as clear for the students as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. And I do, uh, distance learning 2.0 will be different from 1.0 because 1.0 we were thrown into overnight and our teachers jumped in and did an amazing job. I, I talked to all of the South Bay school districts and I, you know, I really am thankful for our educators. They did a great job, but they didn't have time to prep, work together, to really, um, lay out the foundation ahead of time and that's what we're all going to be doing.
I'd like to add that, um, your survey answers are really helpful to us. So for the thousand of you that did complete the survey and if you haven't, you can still do it by five o'clock today, but letting us know what you find to be important. So for example, um, in, uh, one particular question, uh, 73.5%, indicated that a set structured schedule to follow is consistent each school day, that that was important to you. So we're going to look at what are the trends in the data from our survey to determine, okay, what are the things that we want to make sure that we build on, uh, the successes that we're working? And then what are the things that we definitely have a really nice sample size to improve upon? So, um, that'll be really helpful. So once again, if you have not completed the survey, please be sure to, uh, log on and take care of that before five.
Thank you. Yes, the next question was about band. Again, that's something we're going to have to look into the details. I, I know that every site has already started to evaluate their outdoor space and their indoor facilities for what we actually can do within, um, the guidelines at six feet apart. We definitely want to take safety as number one again. Some things might have to be virtual, we don't know yet. So we are definitely going to look into that with the details moving forward. The other one is will in-person class The other one is will in-person class time be focused on core? I think we all know that there could be some learning loss and we are going to, we already started talking about this the moment our students left. How are we going to work together to really see what our students lost, how to support them, what they need? Our teachers are outstanding. They have already collaborated on different assessments they can implement, different programs they can work, help reinforce skills. I have no doubt that they will really be focusing on the core competencies and also making it fun, engaging and relevant. So Dr. Moore, did you want to share on that one? No? Okay. So the next one is how will grading be handled? And I think that's a really important one. I just want to remind everybody, we stopped March 13th and we didn't know, we didn't prepare families, we didn't prepare, prepare teachers. We thought we were coming back in two weeks. So we didn't know what every single situation was, and therefore that was the whole harmless. Moving into this semester, we're, we're learning, we're growing, instruction continues. So I know Mr. Wright is working with a committee on this, but students will be graded. Do you want to share a little bit about your committee?
Yeah, we've been working with our, our cell committee about grading, what grading will look like. And as a, an M Y P as an I V school, that's something we've talked about is using more of our, our M Y P and I V grading in order to be able to provide that feedback to students. But then just looking at, at, you know, how is our grading going to work for students? And that's something that will definitely be talked about inside of our committees. Cause we want students to continue that motivation to continue to be successful.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. And I heard my audio is in and out, so I'll hold it up. I apologize for that. The cleaning, we are going to figure out as sites. We, we take it very seriously. We worked with our E S, C S E A, our custodial team, and they know that this is going to be a challenge. We're going to need to work together, but we're going to do it. And they felt confident that we could actually. Dr. Moore?
Yes, I just wanted to add that Ali Rabehe, our Director of Operations, has been attending many trainings in regards to the cleaning requirements. And we are purchasing specialized equipment that will disinfect and sanitize in an efficient and comprehensive manner. And it could be that some equipment, for example, you know, for those of you that are coming from the elementary playground, equipment might have to have limitations or be off limits initially because of the need to clean after each student cohort use. But definitely that will be explicitly described for parents so that you have clear ideas of what we're doing that will be different.
Okay, thank you. The next question is about working parents. Again, we, we don't know. Our job right now is to make sure that we are able to return to school in whatever capacity is safe and make sure that we have a strong instructional program in place. Once we have the model, our TLC program, who has already been exploring a lot of options, will get to work and see how we can support our families. We don't know yet. And then a workable vaccine, I think we answered this question is that we would like to come back as soon as we can, but there is some work that will need to take place as Dr. Moore shared. We're going to have to return furniture and make sure that we are ready for all kids to come back. But our goal is have them back when it's safe and when we can be prepared. So with the A B model of instruction, will the class offerings change? And Mr. Wright, that is something your committees will be working on, correct? So too soon to say. Do you want to add to that at all?
No, I mean, I think that is exactly what we're looking at is, as far as, you know, our eight classes. And when we meet inside of the committee, what does that look like? And working, of course, with district office and leadership is, is really important to make sure that we can offer everything that we can.
Thank you. One of the other questions was, I muted myself, I apologize. The question was about our schedule for the day. We will not be shorting the day schedule wise. I anticipate it to be very similar, but again, that will be the work of the school sites with their teams and our association. So social distancing to be practiced, if so, how will 18 students fit in our classrooms? And that's again, why we need to make this decision moving forward so we can get to work. Mr. Rabehe has been measuring our classrooms, seeing what can fit, what cannot. We have proactively been looking at spaces at all of our school sites, how we can utilize our outdoors facilities in beautiful Southern California. So lots more to come on that. And we obviously, like I said throughout the presentation, we will follow the guidelines. We want to keep our students and staff safe. Monday for distance learning versus Friday, that's a really good question. Monday is honestly because we lose a lot of Mondays to holidays and we do not want to short our kids any more in-person instruction than feasible. And it just typically, I think we have Martin Luther King, we have our two presidents days. And I believe we may have one other, but we just really don't want any students to lose a single other day. And the distance learning will be conducted for the days when students are at home. That is part of the instructional team and that is something we have already been talking about. But until we have the schedule in place, we can't actively pursue anything. Mr. Wright, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, because it does talk about broadcasting the classes and really what, what we're looking at and part of the instructional team will talk about is how we are extending the learning when students go home. So the students that are coming on Tuesday and Wednesday are getting the same in-class instruction, but then at home, they're continuing what they learned in class on the at-home model.
Okay, thank you. And I, I think that we mentioned this before, the switching in between distance learning and hybrid. If you sign up for distance learning, it will be a commitment for the semester. If you are in the actual hybrid and have to go out for some reason, you can come back in, your seat will be available. And I think the distance learning, they wanted to know a little bit, someone wanted to know a little bit about that, look like. More to come. We're in development and really working hard to see how we can support our students in a full distance learning model. Okay, let's see. How can the teachers instruct the kids who are home on alternate days? That's a great question. And that's one we're going to have to work on once we start with a model in place. We really have some great programs. We can do some ahead of time filming and webcasts. And there's a lot of creative ideas, but we need to work together to ensure that we can utilize every single minute. Mr. Wright or Dr. Moore, do you want to share any more on that?
No, I know, you know, I've thrown this out there, but it's all just brainstorm. You know, we had a tradition at the elementary where students would often read with another student and in Reader's Workshop, for example. And there's nothing that would preclude a teacher to try and read with someone virtually with another student that's paired in the B group. But that is just a Dr. Moore idea that is not from any of our teachers. But it's, we're trying to really think outside the box and consider all possibilities.
Yes, thank you. And another question came up about possibly doing a two-day-in-a-row schedule as opposed to every other day. And I'd like you to know, our committee did look at this. Our concern with the two days in a row and then you're off, you'd be off for five days, including the weekend, which we felt like was a real challenge for our students, social emotionally. We don't know if they're getting the support they need at home to really connect with the learning that happened the day prior. So our committee did discuss this and it was second choice. If we could not work on the cleanliness and we felt confident that we could make sure that we are cleaning in between the A and B cohorts. Let's see, how will you determine how the kids are split up? Those will be in the details too. There's a lot of work once we make this final decision and move forward with it. How will grading work? And again, Mr. Kalaf, hi. Yes, we spoke about that a minute ago and maybe you already heard and have this question in there. But the hold harmless was only because we went into distance learning overnight. That will not apply. Dr. Moore?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that our Board of Education put an end to that grading resolution. So that will expire June 30th. And so we will go back to the grading type of programs that we had in the past, which Dr. or Mr. Wright actually shared earlier.
Thank you. And then one of them is will middle schoolers be switching classes? And I think that would be in the details also based on guidelines. Will the distance learning portion be conducted with daily live teacher interaction as if in their class? We don't know. That's still in development. I think it really depends on how many different grade levels and how many students. So we're really going to work on making sure it's engaging, relevant and highly rigorous for our students at home with connections with the teacher for sure. I just don't want to say daily. Will the amount of platforms used by all teachers be more streamlined? Yes, absolutely. This was a goal of ours prior to going into distance learning and it became even more evident and urgent now that we have seen how many different platforms students are having to access and having the parents wanting to help. So yes, we are absolutely working on streamlining our platforms. We have committees working on this already. And we're actually really excited about some of the things we'll be able to do. Will students be learning over video live with teachers on the Mondays? We don't know what that will look like. I don't believe that they will be doing full day work with their class, but it might be more of a connection day and overview of the week. But we're still in development. Again, these are some of the details for those Mondays. And then the childcare accommodations being made for teachers with school-aged children. Dr. Moore, do you want to answer that one?
Yes, I'd like to once again just mention that we're looking at adding TLC to the middle school and offering full day care during the distance learning days. But it's based on space availability. So we will see, and that would also be at Center in Richmond based on space. So that's why this decision is so important so that we can get into planning. We're actually considering, if possible, we might even be able to start some TLC programming in August. So stay tuned. We'll, we'll let you know if something can start sooner.
And Dr. Moore, do you want to respond to the face mask and face shields from the guidance committee?
Well, I know our teachers are very interested in wearing face shields. And then the C D E actually indicated that those were permissible. Once again, we have to always go back to what does Los Angeles County Department of Public Health share? So we're waiting for that guidance document to come out. Once again, we're hoping for a second draft to be released this week. And then hopefully having a final document in July. This is something that once again is a whole new area for us. And so we've been looking at placing orders and whatnot. I think it's important to note that in working with Mr. Rabehe, the district will be spending roughly a million dollars on P P E and disinfecting and machines and everything related to health and safety, protocols and equipment and materials for our students moving forward. So I think that's important number that you know that we've really drilled down. So stay tuned. We hope to provide more clarity as we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, as you answered, I, I started to scan a lot of the questions and I think I can synthesize some of the answers without specifically addressing the question. I think masks was brought up and temperature. And again, we're going to follow the health guidelines that we are required. We really, as I've said, and I'll continue to say it over and over, safety is utmost importance. And we will follow the guidelines that are put into place. And I think there was a question about going in and out and the, the follow-up question that was at semester two, will students that were in distance learning have an option to go in? I don't know. I anticipate we would work something like that out, but at this time, I think it's too early to tell whether we'd have room to go back in. Something we're going to have to work on. Thank you for that question. I, all of these questions we're capturing and we're going to make sure that we have them in for our committees as well. Then TLC, so this is, this is a question that I wanted to make sure I addressed because it, the question was, it seems like if you have TLC, then the kids could be in class. I think the, the misunderstanding there is we'd have to have more teachers. If we have, we do have some spaces available working with TLC, but we don't have more teachers to teach the, the other half of the class at that time. And as I mentioned in the beginning, budget is something that we do not have more of right now. And we are definitely, definitely looking at every option to provide some sort of childcare. But at this time, we don't have more teachers so that the class would be split in half by the teacher having half of the class at one time. I hope that makes sense.
I'd like to add, Marie said that in looking at our parent survey, it looked like about 40% of parents indicated an interest in knowing what the options were related to childcare. 60% said they were not needing childcare. So we, we really want to be sure we keep that in mind moving forward. It's also important to note that there's research behind being outdoors. And so we're actually looking at, could we offer services using a tent? Could we partner with the local church and on an off learning day, could we use facilities there? So we're trying to be creative because we only have so much space at a school.
Thank you. Yes. So some of the other questions are hybrid model. What will be required to work remotely and hold our hybrid place? Can we stay remote as long as we feel comfortable? Not sure I understand that question 100%, but I think if what you're asking is, if you would like to stay in the hybrid, can you? And how will we support that? We will be making sure all students have what they need. And another follow-up question that would be lunch. And yes, lunch would be provided and we will work on a system for students that are receiving meals to be able to pick those up on the days they're not in school also. So yes, we absolutely will be making sure all of our students are eating.
Yeah. And once again, it's important to note that based on the guidelines, we won't be able to have students self-serving. It'll be more grab and go type meals. So parents will have to make a choice as to whether or not that's something that you're comfortable with. But we'll be sure to communicate that.
Hey, thank you. And I had another question about length of the program. And I, I think some of these questions came in after we've answered them. So if, if I don't answer the question, it's because we've already answered it. And if it still is lingering, please place it in the chat again. I'm going to scroll down a few. Because I, I feel like some of the questions that came up are a little bit repetitive. But I think the next question was about town halls and once the logistics are coming out. And Mr. Wright, do you want to share? Because you and I talked about this several times and you have some great ideas of how to engage and help your families.
Yeah. And I think definitely, you know, still being able to communicate with families is, as we're working within our committees at the schools as we're making inroads into how, how this is all going to work for us in the fall, right? I mean, this is new for everybody and just continuing to reach out to parents. So as we are reaching out and kind of letting people know, okay, as, as we've decided on the class periods and, and here's how schedule rotation is going to work or not work, there'll be a place for parent feedback within those. So as we're kind of sending out, you know, decisions that have been made and guidelines that we've made. And there'll be an opportunity within those to respond back with suggestions, concerns, and really to be able to get parental feedback all along the way as, as we're putting out information.
Thank you. And there's a question about the first day of school being moved up. That's, Dr. Moore, do you want to share about our school calendar?
Yes, our school calendar is negotiated with our teachers association and we've actually approved the last two, the, the next two years. And so there is no plan to make a change to the calendar at this time. We're going to go in with two models, the hybrid and the distance learning, and then take it from there.
Thank you. And I, a lot of the follow-up questions still are about when can we go back to full-time learning? I don't think we can reinforce this enough. As soon as we can, we want to, as soon as it's safe, as soon as we're prepared. We want the kids back, but not until we have those guidelines. And the question was, when will we know it's safe? And again, we have to follow the CDC, public health, all of our guidelines from the Los Angeles County Office of Education. We are really having to make sure we feel safe moving back rather than just hearing about it. And Dr. Moore is on the Los Angeles County Office of Education's task force. So she hears the information to a lot of other people, which is really helpful. And I do know that our state supervisor, Tony Thurman, recently sent out what schools really need to do to be open in the fall. And the model we're proposing is actually in there. It's one of his suggested ideas. And that's a 62-page document that could be found on the California Department of Education. If you're in for some light reading, it has some great guidelines that we'll be, are breaking up and really looking at as a school district and as a team. And OSS came up. We don't know. We'd love to say yes, but it's And OSS came up. We don't know. We'd love to say yes, but it's, that's just something we can't even look at right now because we don't know. As of right now, it's a no, but who knows? If it's an option in the spring, we'll do everything to make it happen. Change school calendar, that's Dr. Moore answered. Temperature checks, we answered at the beginning, but just to reiterate, we're going to follow the health guidelines. And another question about accountability and teachers with their distance learning compartment, the AB classes, I think is the intent of the question. And yes, that will be their class that is coming on the A day and at home on the B day. That's why it's so necessary to provide them some time on Mondays to prepare so that those days when the students are home, they know what they're doing. It's helpful, it's supportive, it's reinforcing, yet engaging. Teachers have incredibly great ideas. I'm really excited about this, but they need the time consistently to continue to develop it so that it is in-the-moment, fluid, flexible, and supporting individuals. Adam, Mr. Wright, sorry?
No problem. One thing I just wanted to point out, one thing that, you know, in being at the middle school the last six months, is that, you know, being on our block schedule, our teachers are used to seeing their students every other day anyways, right? We've kind of been on this, see the students every other day sort of model for the last year. It's obviously going to be a little bit different, you know, because of class time. But I think our teachers are pretty well-prepared for how they can work synchronously and asynchronously with our students under this, this blending model.
I'd like to add, I see a question, Marisa, about distance learning and what that would look like. I do want to clarify for our parents that we have had some tremendous successes in the distance learning model. And so the teachers will indicate if they're interested in in teaching the distance learning model only. And so it will be a competitive selection process. So it would be my assumption that those that have been the most successful and that are interested through the, our interview process and being vetted would be the ones selected for that. So I think that's very important for our parents to know. So I can't assign a percentage per se about synchronous versus asynchronous, but it would be teachers that experienced tremendous success in distance learning. So I think that's very important.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. And reading through some of the questions, there's, there's been several questions about how the cohorts will be formed. We don't know that yet. Our, our sites will be working to, as we mentioned, work on with families being kept together as, as much as possible. And then some people asked about cohorts and neighborhoods and things like that. They're all considerations, but I'm not going to say they're all something we can do. We'll try our best, and we're going to be working on that site by site once we make this decision. There's also some questions about, you know, how, how to manage the kids, how are grades going to be? A lot of these are from this spring. Please know we're building back better. This, this, that was overnight, and we have time. And we're really going to dig in and make sure that it's better so we can support our teachers, our students, and our parents. We're all in this together, and we, we anticipate it being a really exciting way to return to school. We'd love to have everyone back, but I think we can make this a really engaging, exciting program for our students where they will learn and grow together. So I think those are the main questions I've been seeing. And I, I hope that we've answered some of them, even though we can't answer everything. I think the one question I'm really hoping to see is if there's any concerns specifically about AB that we haven't thought of. And I think we have thought through everything, but you never know, and that's why we're here. So I think some of the questions about what do we do if an educator is sick? What do we do if a student is sick? Those are all things we are working on once we decide upon this model. And I think that was it for the questions. I haven't heard any new ones other than that.
Marisa, I'd just like to add on that point that we'll have actually district protocols for scenarios like that. So it won't be, you know, the burden and pressure on just Mr. Wright about, oh, my gosh, I have a student ill or I have a teacher ill, that we will have district protocols in accordance with the guidance from Public Health. So nobody's going to be out there trying to handle this on their own. We take this extremely, extremely seriously. So please know we'll be supporting our sites in that way.
Okay. And Mr. Wright, did you want to share anything else that's come up from some of these questions? I'm going to give it one last scan and see if there's anything we have not answered. But I want to make sure you have an opportunity to address anything you've been thinking about through this.
Yeah, I was kind of, kind of scrolling through some of the questions, too. You know, really just, you know, we, we just ask, kind of like we did with distance learning, just ask for patience. We are, you know, going to fully vet and, and, and try to make this the best experience possible for all of our students and all of our teachers. We have teachers that work really hard and really want to do a good job and, and have the best learning opportunities for our kids. I think, like I said, as I've gone through the questions, you know, we want to be able to give students every opportunity that they would normally have in, in a traditional school setting and try to provide that. But obviously, you know, depending on, on what everything looks like, you know, we're, we're just going to have to occasionally talk about, you know, clubs after school. Like that, those are the things that we'll talk about in committees and what those possibilities are. But like I said, I, I just hope that you guys were all super patient and super understanding during distance learning, and I really appreciate it. And I, and I really appreciate all the suggestions and understanding that you'll have for us as we work through this to make this really, really the best, the best program around. And I think we can provide that, and I think our, our students are going to get the best education in the South Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. And just skimming through, again, I wanted to let you know that a lot of the questions are in the details that we cannot answer at this time. We're, we're thinking about all these things, too. We really want to get to work. We also want to make sure we're making the right decision. We feel really good about the AB and think this will be the recommended model. We are meeting with elementary schools tomorrow and the high school tomorrow afternoon. I'm hoping that we might, if we need another town hall, we're absolutely willing to do that to answer AB-specific questions. And then we would like to move forward with this so that we can be getting the work on the details by school site. But as Dr. Moore shared, we will have a district committee that will be helping guide the sites. So they're not on their own trying to figure these things out. And I, one question was asked about, can parents have a say? Can they have input? Absolutely. There will be a lot of parent outreach this summer. We really want input. The survey was a wonderful way for us to see what's working well, what isn't. And we're going to find ways to capture that and share it. And somebody asked how to find it. It's in the email for this, but I'll make sure the link is on our website, the homepage, so that anybody can access it until 5:00 PM this Friday. And also, thank you for all the nice notes in the chat. That was really nice to read along the way. This is hard, but it's hard on everyone, and we're so grateful to be a part of ESUSD and have such great teachers and parents. I just, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else going through this. So thank you all very, very much. Dr. Moore, did you want to share anything else?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for taking time to attend. We have over 200 people on the call now. We're just so grateful to all of you. And I just really want to say, we're trying our very, very best to get out ahead of this. We're actually a leader in the South Bay as it relates to trying to make decisions sooner rather than later. I think it's absolutely imperative that we know what the instructional model is so that we can attend to all those details and reimagine. Things that we do unconsciously today, we are going to have to orchestrate for our kids in the fall in order to ensure their safety and health. So just know that we are doing our very best on behalf of the students, and we are trying to keep this information coming to you in bite-sized chunks so that you can think about it and, and reach out and email Mr. Wright and let him know, hey, what about web? Where, where are we going to be? And so that we get that on our radar and, and we make sure that we're offering something for our kids in those areas. So anyway, we will move forward and finish up with these other town halls and, and then complete our committee work.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. More to come. And if you want to, you're welcome tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM or at 3:00 PM if you want to hear the presentation with different questions. And have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you again. Bye.
Thank you, everybody.